Conquered Select Board on January 24, 2022. Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Present.
Ms. Bates. I believe that she's still not here. Mr. Dane. I believe you have your filter problem again, Mr. Dane. Ms. Escobedo.
Present.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, present.
And I see Susan Bates is just joining us now.
Okay.
Susan, we just did roll call.
Oh, I'm here.
Okay.
Acknowledged.
And Henry will be right back, I guess. So let's begin with the consent agenda.
So move to approve the consent agenda, including the town accountant warrants as of January 20, 2022, and the select board minutes from the following meeting, October 18, 2021, executive session, October 23, 2021, executive session, November 17, 2021, executive session, November 22, 2021, regular session and executive session number one, and exec and December 13, 2021, regular session with the following two amendments that Susan had provided, and that is under liaison reports. I believe it's on page three of those minutes, or page 18 of the packet. She had indicated that the first word in line three should be union and not salary to read increases for non-union employees instead of non-salaried employees. And then, under the West Concord Junction Cultural Committee, the end of the third line should read, and to create another as opposed to, and to paint another. That was the motion.
That is. Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane. We're not hearing you. Okay, we hear you now.
Hi.
Okay, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Great. Okay, our next, um, we're going to put off because I don't see the person who wants to make these remarks. We're going to, so item number three, we're going to move to the end and we'll do it at public comment. So we will hear now from our town accountant. This is going to be a new tradition started, suggested by Carrie LaFleur, that our town accountant give us a semi-annual report on how we're doing with our budget versus actuals. So we want to welcome Mary Barrett, Town Accountant.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Mary Barrett. I've been the town accountant for seven-plus years now. My group is responsible for maintaining the town's general ledger, our state reporting, coordinating the annual audit process, and overseeing and processing the town bills for payments. So just to give people an idea of what my group does, as Madam Chair mentioned, I've been asked to give an update on mid-year actuals, which is as of December 31, 2021, because it's fiscal year. And given that this is the first time, I thought it would be good to focus on the general fund, operating fund, which we refer to in our system as Fund One. And I'll go through my series of slides to talk about the revenues and expenditures related to general fund. So let me bring up, if I can, bring my presentation up. Actually, wait a minute here. Let me get to. I'm gonna share my slides here. So we're going to start off with the general fund revenue, which, as of December 31, we had a total of $57.8 million in revenue. Can everybody see my slide?
Yes.
Okay. And the components of the general fund revenue is shown in this pie chart is the property tax revenue, which is our largest portion of the revenue. And then we have the local receipts, which is our our other taxes and departmental receipts, like permits and licenses and so forth. State aid, which is our cherry sheet money that we get. And last but not least, we have other financing sources, which is primarily the town services that we provide to the enterprises and other organizations, such as regional housing services, the retirement board, et cetera. So I just wanted to show in this first slide sort of the breakout of that $57.8 million.
And while you show the amount relative to the full year budget, you don't show, like, relative to past year, year-to-date. And so I was having a hard time, just because of the first time through, understanding, like, are local receipts down? You know, is this a good thing? Are we looking at good numbers or bad numbers, you know?
Well, I thought about that, and I wasn't sure exactly what you folks were looking for, but there's certainly, Nexonic and Incorporated, I know when it comes to expenses, it was kind of difficult in the way that we, you know, if I look back at that period of time, there were so many things going on with tracking CARES expenses. You know, back in 2021, and those expenses didn't get moved out until the end of the year to their proper grants account. So it gets a little tricky, but certainly I can go back and pull that together and even pass that on later.
But CARES show up as another slice, like federal aid, or?
Well, this is, that's why I'm just focusing on general fund. I'm not, I'm not looking at all the revenue for the town. I'm just looking at operating. So we, the money from CARES is a federal, there, it's federal monies, and that's reported in our system under a different fund. We track the federal grants, we track state grants, so this.
But then are there transfers from that fund into here?
No, we keep everything, we keep, those monies are kept separately, and we report the expenses related to those grants in the grant, because I have to do reporting
Yep.
to the state and to the, you know, and for the audit, we have to be able to make that distinction.
Yeah, it's all extra budget. Yeah, extra budget, very, yeah.
So this is why I wanted, first of all, just to focus on general fund, but I'd be looking for your feedback to let me know what you would like to see the next time I come back, you know, what more meaningful information you would need. So on the next slide, this is where I was just comparing it to budget. Through, you know, it's compared to the full year budget, and as you can see, property taxes are trending roughly 50%, which makes sense, because at this point, we've only collected the first two quarters of property taxes. So it seems like we're right on, on task with that. With, and like I said, in total, we're roughly 50%, which we would expect about this time to see at least, you know, the 50%. And like with the state aid, we're about 50%, and that's, you know, we get our disbursements on a monthly basis, so we've gotten state aid for the first, you know, six months, so. And then local receipts, depending on what's, you know, when we get the licenses and permits, and when, you know, motor vehicle, the same way, we collect motor vehicle taxes, you know, throughout the year, so that would vary.
But it seems like hotel and restaurant meal tax must be down for this to be at 40 instead of 50%.
Yeah, I mean, we have seen, obviously because of COVID, but Carrie, do you have any thoughts on? You know, Matt's question about the?
Sure, so local receipts in the first half of the year will always be below 50% because the, the largest motor vehicle excise commitment comes out in February. We've actually just received that, and we'll be sending that out in the next week or so. And then building permit receipts tend to be heavier the second half of the year versus the first half of the year. In terms of the meals tax and the rooms tax, it is, they're both trending below our historical averages, but they're doing better in terms of the last two years this year. So we are seeing an increase and, and heading towards returning to normal, but definitely lower because of the pandemic, obviously.
Any other questions?
Yeah, the OFS is the smallest percentage-wise, is there anything driving that?
Well, part of the, part of that is, we supply, we do services for the retirement board, and we haven't gotten, we haven't received their payments. They typically, on a quarterly basis, we would send, we would have to send an invoice to the retirement board to get that money, so that hasn't been reflected yet. And regional housing services, we usually don't get their payment until the end of the year, so.
So it's just not, it's, it's fine, you're saying?
Yeah, it's, it's timing. It's, it's all about the timing, so, you know, at this stage in the game, I think what we want to be able to see is that, you know, we're not at, you know, 70% of our budget, you know, our operating budget now at the end of December, and expecting to spend more down the road, and, and obviously, you know, roughly the 50% with revenue, knowing that there are some timing differences, but at this point, I believe that everything is still on track, and that it's trending in the right direction.
So I think what would be helpful in the future, maybe the timing of the revenue doesn't matter, except maybe compared to the other years.
Okay.
The expenses would definitely matter. I know some of those are a timing issue also, but like you said, I think that's what we're most concerned is if we're in danger of overspending and needing a transfer in a budget line.
Yeah.
You're going to get to.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. So we can now get into the operating expenses. So the total for general fund operating expenses as of December 31st was $54.6 million, and I just wanted to show sort of the breakout, a high-level breakout that we have, you know, basically the two categories at this point, personnel expenses and non-personnel expenses, personnel obviously being the salary and wages. And this is how, in this slide, it's, just see if I can get this. As you can see, again, it's a comparison to the budget, personnel expenses, you know, right at 50%, we, you're halfway in the year, so we get paid throughout the year, so, you know, that's a reasonable number. Non-personnel expenses, you know, is, is, is still good, you know, we want to see, at this point, I think the expectation is at least 50%, but if we're low, below that, that's good. So for total, we're, you know, about 46%. And all I'm showing here is just actuals. I haven't, you know, we don't, there's also a certain amount of dollar, budget dollars that have been committed but haven't been spent yet, but my focus is on actuals.
And Mary, these are as of December 31st, right?
They're as of December 31st, yes.
I mean, I, I think, from my perspective, projections are the things that are interesting, you know, okay, we've spent this much, but what do we expect? We're, we're going to be at the end of the fiscal.
Yeah, and I agree, and, but that, that's an area that I'm not involved with directly. I know we have Finance Administration that does a lot of the projections, and maybe that may, may make sense to bring them, to present that, but I agree, I agree that, you know, it's really, where, where do you think we're going to be by the end of the year? So that, you know, maybe we will work with them to get some information to present next time.
If I can, if I could just jump in, as soon as we pass the 50% mark, the budgeting group starts doing projections through the end of the fiscal year, and we just completed our first projection through the end of the fiscal year, and we're projecting a surplus of about $1.2 million at this point. Now, that, that number is going to tighten up. I don't expect when we close the year that we'll have a surplus of, of quite that much, but that, that is our first projection, $1.2 million under budget.
So in my next slide, I just wanted to show how the total of the $54.6 million is broken out into the categories or at the department level. So as you can see, you've, the school is a larger, is the largest percent of the spending up to this point. Then you have these different, you know, we have general government, and I tried to show it kind of similar to what you may have seen in the budget books, or, you know, the categories, but in your packet, towards the end, you would see sort of the individual departments that make up each of these categories. And even within those departments, there are divisions that make up that department, which I provided the list at the end of the packet to show, and if, so you can see, for example, it'll remind me jumping ahead, this is where what makes up general government is like town manager, these are our individual departments that we report in our system. And to take it one step further, like, for example, for the town manager, the town manager is really made up of these divisions, so that's all the information that we've kind of, you know, the lower level rolled up to a higher level in this particular slide.
And the joint accounts, that includes the high school?
Yeah, joint accounts, well, we have, the joint accounts are the debt, we've got the retirement, assessment, unemployment.
Okay, so they're not the high school?
They're not in the joint, they're in the assessments.
Okay.
The regional, the regional school district and Minuteman are part of the assessment. So then my last slide here was, again, was just to show the comparison to to budget in these different categories, and as you can see, like, general government, it's about 52%. We have other departments that are, you know, trending below the 50%. Some of these expenses, like in joint, we may have some upfront expenses, so then towards the end of the year, we won't be spending, you know, that money, like the assess, you know, like, and even like in the assessments, like, we pay for, the retirement contribution is paid at the beginning of the fiscal year, so we would have that entire amount spent at that time. But as you can see, overall, we're at roughly 46% for total general fund expenses. We are lower than the revenues that have come in, which is good. So I think we're, we're progressing in the right direction, but like I said, due to timing, you know, we, when we come back next time, it could be a different picture, but at least this is where we are as of December 31st.
Mary, in general government, that we spent 52%, is a little bit of a warning flag halfway through the year, or are there some costs that we had to pay upfront?
If we look again about how this is broken out, and again, Carrie, you know, if you have any insight, you know, at this point, I'm, you know, I don't, I'm not, well, like, this is a big chunk that we just do at the beginning of the year, the 1.3 million is the free cash. We transfer free, you know, for the free cash articles and capital outlay. We, we take it out, we have.
Okay, so that's, so that's an upfront transfer, so that's accounted for, okay, thanks.
Yeah, so that's.
And also, does this page have a total, I think the total?
Realize I didn't have a total, but this should all, I can, I will provide that as a follow-up. So I didn't have the totals, I have it embedded in the back of my chart, but I didn't put it down here, but I will make sure to get that to you. Do you have any other questions?
So I know this is the first time we're doing this, and I'm thinking, if you'd like to come back around, maybe May or so, when it's starting to get close to the end of the fiscal year, you know, you and Carrie can decide what the best date is, and we can be prepared to see if we're going to need some transfers. But this is a really excellent start, thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Well, another question is, you know, we have a lot of debate about the free cash position that we're likely to have for town meeting. And I, you know, I don't know how we're going to approach that, since, of course, town meeting happens before the end of the fiscal, but it would be good to have a sense of whether we're going to be in a better place or a worse place than we expected at that time. Just because of all the demands on free cash that people have in mind at town meeting.
Yeah, we're, you know, we're in the process of trying to get, you know, the balance sheet completed to get our, you know, our free cash certified based on our 2021 results, but certainly I could work with Carrie, and, and we can try to see if, you know, I know that.
Yeah, I know we can only kind of work with certified on one hand, but there's also sort of a general feeling, which can help us feel whether we should be optimistic or pessimistic about the certified free cash, I guess.
You know, I think that that's something we can work with Carrie and the Finance Administration staff to, based on the projections, try to, you know, come up with a free cash estimate FY '22.
And when do you think approximately you will have that estimate?
Oh, well, I thought you said for like, for, for the next time to come in in May?
Or are you looking? I'm sorry, about the free cash.
Oh, about the certified, the certified free cash?
Right.
Well, that's something that, you know, Carrie and I have, you know, been discussing, and again, once I submit, hopefully in the next, you know, couple of weeks, so have the balance sheet ready, and then we'll, then it gets submitted to the, the DOR, and then depending on where we are in the queue and all that, then they should be able to go through our data and then get us, you know, get certification for that.
Okay.
So to try to get, you know, hopefully that information sooner than later.
So you're going to submit in the next few weeks, that's great.
Yes, that's, that's the goal. If all goes well, that's, that's our plan.
Do other board members have some questions? Okay, don't see any. Thanks again, Mary, and we'll look to see you again in a few months.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Don't forget to stop.
Yep, I did.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Bye.
Bye-bye. And I'm looking to see if our next guest is here. Um, why don't we move on right now to the town manager's report while we're waiting?
Sure, and if anybody sees town council pop up, just, just stop me. I do have a fairly lengthy report, but I will go through it as quickly as possible. We had a very successful special town meeting last week, which I know you are all aware of, but there was a lot of thought and, and effort and creativity that went into that, and I'd like to take a moment to thank some individuals who were particularly helpful in making sure or ensuring the success of special town meeting. The town clerk's office assisted with planning efforts, they helped to register 517 voters, 102, 102 of them were in vehicles. And the town clerk's office team helped to ensure a smooth experience for all voters. Minuteman Media worked to ensure that all audiovisual needs were met, that all four town meeting locations were connected, and that the event was properly televised. A special thank you to Mark Polly for his incredible efforts on this work. The police department worked extensively on traffic flow, parking, and overall security at the high school. Chief O'Connor helped to ensure a safe town meeting. The fire department, led by Chief Judge, provided masks to attendees in conjunction with the health department, and advised on COVID protocols and emergency procedures at town meeting. The radio station, WIQH, provided several tours of the high school and explained the technical capabilities of each space in the high school. The station manager also ensured town meeting was broadcast on 88.3 FM. The facilities department brought additional air purifiers, set up equipment, and broke down all equipment in record time. The Department of Public Works advised on setup and offered necessary additional equipment. The IT department provided technical assistance before and during town meeting. Dr. Hunter and the school administration were incredibly flexible and accommodating in allowing the town to use and reserve so much of the high school to reduce density and encourage participation. Chris Carmody did an amazing job coordinating town meeting on behalf of all of us. Finally, I'd like to thank town moderator Carmen Reese for all her work on planning special town meeting. I'd also like to thank her staff, David Carr, Abe Fisher, Mike Lawson, Carrie Flood, and especially Alice Kaufman for presiding over the only outdoor town meeting location near, during near Arctic conditions. And I apologize, I know that was lengthy, that's only part of my report, but it really was an amazing, amazing performance by all. It was like watching New Year's Eve, I think. So thank you for indulging me, and I see Nina, so I will take a pause and return after the update from town council.
But also, just to say that was an excellent town meeting, it was, under the circumstances, especially, and to Alice, it's usually not the assistant town moderator's job to sprint in the cold, but she had to do that, yeah.
So Alice, you provided a wonderful service and some comic relief as well. We watched you from our comfortable warmth, but it went off without a hitch. Everybody participated, it was just really excellent. So we'd like to welcome Nina MacCarius now to go over our mid-year report on town council legal costs.
Good evening, everyone, and before I start, I think so far the highlight of 2022 certainly is how successful that town meeting was, and very efficient, so congrats to you all, and, and great job. As, as promised, every six months or so, we have been providing an update and taking some of your feedback from past meetings, have tried to format it slightly differently about the costs incurred for legal expenses, as well as just to give you a sense of goings-on that we're being asked to participate in. There's obviously a lot more going on in the manager's office and the town beyond that. You have in front of you, I believe it's in your meeting packet, it's a summary of our expenses. I'll start, I want to walk through them fairly quickly, they're organized by the way By the way that the matters are billed to the town, so this is consistent with how Carrie receives the bills. Both now and in her, her, her prior capacity as, as finance director. Organized by matter and what we call task codes, which is effectively correlate to either. Uh, boards or committees or significant matters like the Starman matter. The biggest piece of news, um, I guess just on the overview, is we are running. At a pace that is, is much more akin to what we have had been running in years prior to the Estherbrook litigation. Uh, probably the biggest news for the past six months is that the Estherbrook litigation fees are. Then in the litigation is complete with the trial. Ended in the fall and all, and, and all post-trial briefing done in the fall. And we don't expect much in the way, if, if anything, we actually expect nothing in the litigation bucket. Uh, for Estherbrook until we get a decision, um, and, and we, you know, have an exact time on that, but hopefully the next couple of months. Other than that, um, as you'll see, as I just go through the various slides, um, we have. Most of, a, a more normal split between general and other litigation costs. Um, and about a total of $157,000 bills in July to December. With about another 22 non-ANK bills that Carrie can speak to if there are more questions for other special counsel. Which leaves about 246,000, 640 or so from January onward. In the legal budget, which we feel is a, a much, uh, more comfortable position, um, unless something truly unexpected happens. We think that's a reasonable budget, and I think Carrie, uh, and I have talked about it and, and agree on that. Carrie, anything to weigh in before I go off the, the general, okay? All right, so moving on to the general bit, um, sorry, I seem to always get a visitor right at the worst time. My four-year-old just came in. The, the general matters, um, these are split up by department, um, this, for the past six months. It's $50,000, um, uh, total. The biggest chunk of that is in the planning board. Um, and, uh, you'll see 13,000 there and 5,000 the ZBA. Those were related partially to the Simes matter. I know there was a question. Received last week about how much totals and signs between litigation and the general matter. It's about $27,000. Defending the three pieces of litigation filed by, by Simes as well as advising the ZBA. On the earth removal permit, which is now an appeal. There's also separate costs in the planning board matter. Because of a proposed subdivision at 48Y Fitchburg, which the planning staff has asked us quite a bit about. And which, which we've had to attend. Estherbrook, um, I'll just, um, again, say that the costs are. Uh, in the litigation bucket are complete, public records expenses are also. Smaller than they were at this time last year. There's not a significant public records request outstanding. We have been getting. One every couple of weeks that for a document or two, but, um, nothing of the same magnitude that we discussed last January. The litigation matters, uh, generally speaking, there are sort of three sets. There are, what I've titled here, land court title matters. The town has been. Uh, from time to time will, will be involved in. Matters where there is a private dispute over property rights. Um, and the town as an abutting property owner, um, is required to participate like any other abutting property owner. All three of the cases that have been. Involved recently, a town has not had any objection or really any role in the dispute. We have simply been asked to. Provide our input to the court about the town's position, and so it's been relatively light costs, like UCA road. Matter and the Rizetano matter, uh, should be concluded soon. We haven't spent any real dollars on the Mandrioli matter. In years, but the case is not yet dismissed, so that is, is pending as well. The other source of litigation is the Simes matter, which I know we've talked about a bit in the past. One thought in terms of, one question sort of what might come in the next six months. Just to give you a, a brief update, if you recall, there was a federal court matter. Ri- arising out of the subdivision appeal, a. A traditional matter, subdivision appeal to the superior court, and then after the earth. Removal permit was denied, an appeal of that denial. The, um, the one that is complete is the traditional subdivision appeal. Um, that went through the land court, um, if you recall, the, um, the judge agreed with the developer. That the conditions requiring a reservation of land. Exceeded the scope of the subdivision for, for, excuse me, for affordable housing purposes exceeded the. The scope of what's allowed under subdivision control law, and the town chose not to appeal. So that case is complete. The related federal case seeks, um, is a regulatory taking claim. It's a basically a damages claim. The amount of the claim has not been stated. I believe it would be pretty small, given the limited time when, when, um. Parcels were reserved for both the reservations of parcels for affordable housing purposes, as was required by the town bylaw. As well as for park purposes, which is actually explicitly permitted by state law. Uh, that case is still pending, but, um, is largely moot because of the, the prior action. And so we have kept the doors open for, for a negotiated settlement to avoid unnecessary expense there. Uh, and the last case is a ZBA denial, which. We are currently in a discovery phase or was a, uh, one attempted settlement. So far we have not gotten there. Uh, but again, you know, I, we, we are working diligently, trying to make sure that stays, um, on the fishing course and. As well as while protecting the town's interest on that. That last matter in particular could generate some more expenses over the next six months, because there may be some expert discovery. For both sides, um, a lot of the issue has to do with how much earth removal was required for the subdivision. Plan, um, that was approved and was at issue before. So that is, that is a major source. I, I don't think we're talking anything. Uh, that would upset the overall budget. Um, it's a fairly routine zoning matter even with experts. Um, but that is, that is the one case that has some potential to grow. And then lastly, just so you see it, there, the last sort of sub-matter is the middle school construction. Matter, very little was spent on that, but we do bill that matter separately, uh, because it's a separate project. Again, we, even though. The project is moving forward, our involvement is likely to be limited to review and, and editing of, of contracts, which should not generate. Uh, significant expenses. So on the whole, on the expense side, I think we're, uh, in a good place. We're also happy to be, uh, involved in, in a, in a variety of projects. I think town staff have. Handled the, um, transition, uh, of, from town manager to interim town manager. Very well and have, um, been involving us in, in a normal slew of traditional projects, including. Advice on the, um, Aspet, Aspet, excuse me, Bluffs. Potential acquisition and the town's role in that, um, town meeting preparation, et cetera, and, and that's where we are. So I, I want to leave most of the time for questions, so sorry to rush through the, the numbers there.
All right, I was on mute. Um, thank you very much, Nina. Um, that's a great summary. Uh, do we have some questions from the board? Henry.
When we discussed the, um, um, the decision in the land court case in Sims, I thought that the, um. The figure that we were given on the cost to date was something in the neighborhood of $75,000. In, uh, in expenses. And I don't believe that included the, um, any of the work that was done in the US District Court case. And, um, up to that point, and, and, um, on the US District Court case. There was, was also recently a, uh, motion to dismiss. Which must have taken some time and some effort, and so that the, I would guess that the costs. On that were substantially more than the $75,000. Or more than the $27,000 that were just mentioned for that case.
Mr. Dane, so actually, all those costs were incurred in the first half of, of last year. The case was briefed and argued, the decision came out recently, but the case was argued and briefed prior to July. These are July 1. Through December 31 expenses, so that 75,000 included all of the briefing and argument in the federal case. Um, as well as most of the action in the, um, state court case with the exception of the. Post-decision discussion of, of appeal approaches.
Thank you.
Uh, other questions? Okay, well, things are running really well, so we don't have lots of questions this year. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming to town meeting, and, um, we'll be seeing you again at the annual town meeting, if not before. Okay, right. So, um, we can move back now to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So in your packet, you should have received a copy of the full report. I won't go through. All of that. I've, I've just highlighted a, a few items that I think are of particular. Interest, um, and I wanted to mention that the town clerk has advised that as of today. We have received and mailed out 449 absentee ballots. And the deadline to apply for an absentee ballot by mail is this Friday, January 28th at 5:00 PM. Um, we're also getting a lot of calls from residents looking for their annual census form. Uh, the town clerk has advised that she expects that the census forms will go out at the end of this week. That the mailing was delayed because we were expecting to get re-present precincting updates. Precinct updates are still being processed, so we have decided, or the town clerk's office has decided. To send census forms out without precinct information. And we'll be notifying those with precinct changes of their new precinct locations as soon as possible. We have seen a decline in the number of positive COVID cases over the last couple of weeks. So that is, that is good news. We have another vaccine clinic scheduled for tomorrow, January 25th. This will be at Concord Carlisle Regional High School cafeteria from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. And while this event is focused on providing booster shots for adolescents aged 12 to 17. Any resident of the town of Concord is welcome to attend. The economic and vitality, economic vitality and tourism staff recently applied for a Mott grant. This is the Massachusetts Office of Travel and Tourism Recovery Grant. They requested $45,000, and these funds will be used to create a digital media campaign. With the goal of targeting New England residents and enticing them to visit the town of Concord. The, uh, conservation staff submitted an, an application today to the Land and Water Conservation Fund. For a grant of $500,000 to assist with the acquisition of the Aspet River Bluff Project. We expect to hear from the state by early May. And by the National Park Service by the end of the calendar year. We are currently recruiting for a part-time plumbing and gas inspector. Now, this is a 12-hour-per-week position. And, uh, we are happy to take applications from anybody who is, um, interested in that type of work. The CPC met on January 18th to finalize their recommendations for 13 projects totaling 21. Million, uh, 22,153,741 dollars. We have received 19 applications for the position of health director. We are currently reviewing those applications and will be scheduling interviews with the most qualified individuals in the coming weeks. Our planning staff participated in a web, a webinar with DHCD. On the MBTA Communities Initiative. Uh, this is an initiative that. Is looking to increase the amount of, uh, multifamily housing that is within a half mile of MBTA stations. So we're working on analyzing that new legislation and trying to. Come up with ways that the town of Concord will be able to meet that. The select board should expect a memo in the. Um, near future and a presentation will be scheduled to talk about this initiative. We do have some planned construction work this week on Hubbard Street to repair a section of sewer line. Uh, right now, we do not have an exact date for this, but we are hoping to do that this week. The, the excavation of the sewer line will take two days, and then there'll be an additional day to repave. And while we'll, while, while we are doing this work, there will be road closures within the area. The, um, several updates from human services. The human services staff is starting to receive an increased number of phone calls. From concerned residents who are now exhausting benefits under the federal pandemic relief. Act. There are several families that continue to struggle to make ends meet. Even though the job market is, is fairly favorable. We would ask that if you or someone you know needs services or is struggling. That they call community services, and that number is 318-3034. Our senior services division is actively recruiting for volunteers to offer one-on-one computer and technology tutoring. For seniors in town, if you or someone you know is interested and willing to provide this important service, we ask that you contact. The senior services staff. Beginning next month, the senior services staff will be taking appointments for tax return preparation assistance, which is sponsored by AARP. Um, Harvey Wheeler will continue to, to be an intake site for Concord seniors. To complete and file their fuel assistance applications as well. And then finally, we have, well, actually not quite finally, a couple of fun events coming up this winter. The annual Winter Wonderland Event is scheduled for February 12. This will include sleigh rides, ice skating, and lots of winter fun for the whole family. We're also in the process of preparing for the ever-popular Shamrock Ball Father Daughter Dance. That will take place in March. We have some new staff at Minuteman Media Network. Um, we now have a total of three full-time staff. Station manager Mark Polly is set to interview two additional part-time videographers for nighttime governmental meetings. As the inclusion of both Zoom and in, in-person. Uh, Zoom hybrid meetings has, has created an increased workflow for Minuteman Media Network. Uh, Mark Polly and his team are also working on soliciting quotes and design specifications. For a better portable audio system for the townhouse hearing room. That will be greatly appreciated. Once that is, is received, we hope to have that available in the near future. Public Information Officer Erin Stevens would like to remind everybody that annual town reports are due. And at this point in time, we are still missing several, so please submit those as soon as possible. So that we can complete our annual report on time and have that ready for town meeting. The last item I wanted to mention is there was a request for a vacancy report. And I, I am still working on that. The report that I received wasn't, uh, particularly visually appealing. And I wanted to add some to that, so I will have that out this week. But I can tell you, at this point in time, well, through December 31st. We have 361.28 full-time equivalents across. The, the whole town organization, so general fund and all of the enterprise funds. And we have at this time 30.25 vacancies, which represents 8.37%. The general fund, uh, represents 20 of those vacancies, so 10.25 in the enterprise funds. But again, later this week, I will have a more detailed report, and I, I'm happy to talk about it. In, at length, at a, at a select board meeting, if you would like to do that at some point. in at length at a at a select board meeting if you would like to do that at some point in the future. So that is the end of the report. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from the board?
I I just want to thank Carrie for mentioning some of the key personnel functions that are currently in the process of being recruited. It's helpful to have that update alone while we're waiting for the other information, so thank you.
I have two questions. One is, Carrie, you mentioned that I think it was the state is not ready yet with approving our precincts, so we can't do a mailing yet, if I heard you correctly. And yet, we have a vote coming up in about ten days. And I know the mail is very slow in some recent town, I can week, so I'm just wondering if there's anything we can do. Things like even putting up a sign at Ripley in case someone goes there. You know, we need we need to really get the word out, and I see Kari is here as well.
Yes, we have an amazing League of Women Voters in Concord, who is reaching out to people whose precincts have changed to let them know that their precincts have changed. We are planting signs at Ripley School, which is the former voting location for precinct four, to let them know that voting will be at the Hunt Gym on the second floor. And while the the precinct thing is delayed by the state, it is in effect as of December thirty first, twenty twenty one. So we have no choice but to move ahead and we may have to do some some manual adjustments to our voting lists to make sure that we have the correct information, but we will have the correct information. And and we will reach out and make sure that voters know.
I know you're doing, and the league is fantastic in.
Yes.
I guess there's two issues. One is people whose precinct has changed. And then there are people who are still in the same precinct number, but the voting location has changed.
Yes, the there was a townwide notice that went out to every household to let them know what the new polling locations are and to give them links for those who are comfortable with with the internet to find out if their address has changed. So so that notice has already been mailed.
That's the green green notice, right?
It was, yes, yeah.
Okay, and if someone can't find that notice, it's available on the website.
It is.
Okay.
Yes, and we will we'll we'll have signs up. We don't want to put them up too early, but we will put signs up around town to let people know what the polling locations are. And we'll make sure that we have those posted. The precinct maps are at the post offices and we'll make sure that we have the the polling locations listed more prominently there as well, as much space as they'll give us.
Wonderful, thank you. And I see Matt hand up, but I have one other question, which is about a different issue. The sound system, I think, Carrie, you said in the townhouse hearing room. You said we may be able to have that in the next few weeks. Would it be ready and timed for the caucus on February seventh, which is in two weeks? And I think we need to have that live, if not do it by Zoom. Or can we rent the equipment again?
I I do. I'm not sure we would have our own equipment purchased in in time for the caucus, but I did see that you made that request maybe last week and I think we're working towards having equipment like like that available for the caucus.
Thank you. Great. Matt?
But just one question and a comment. So the question is really about the Assabett River Bluff Project Grant, and I was confused why the National Park Service is weighing in on this. Any ideas or do I need to take that up with Dilia?
You know, I'm I'm happy to to take that up as as well. I I almost wish I didn't read that part because as I was reading it, what it wasn't making sense to me as well. I don't, Marcia just popped up. I don't know if that she if she has an answer or or not, but I'm. Well, the Land and Water Conservation Fund is a federal funding source and it is it is administered by the National Park Service, so they would be the ones ultimately who have to approve the grant.
Wow, so even for something that's not on their properties?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. And then the comment was just about these new Mass Save Grants for homeowners, you know, ten thousand dollars towards heat pump installation or, you know, for air source or fifteen for ground source. I mean, this is a serious amount of money. I hope we can, you know, really get residents aware of this, you know, somehow. So I know that that's primarily going to be the responsibility of the municipal light plant, but just given the town's overall sustainability goals, I think that, you know, it's a broader responsibility that we have.
Okay, are there other questions from the board? Okay. Right, we will move on to the chair's remarks. We did the town managers' report in the chair's remarks later than usual tonight due to scheduling of some of our guests. Okay, so we've already talked about special town meeting was a big success. The vote coming up on February third. New polling locations. Also, this Thursday, January twenty seventh, the league is sponsoring by Zoom a debate between the two school committee candidates. I think you have to register for that. Diane, do you want to tell us very briefly about that? Diane, you're on mute.
Sorry, I thought it started at seven and it started at six thirty, so I missed. I'll say something later. I guess it's at seven thirty from seven thirty to eight thirty, and you can register for that by going to the League of Women Voters of Concord and Carlisle website. Or if, and that that should work, if it doesn't, contact any member of the league who you know and will be able to help you register. So thank you very much, Terry.
Thank you. And the the other item we didn't do will take up a public comment. Also, the annual town meeting warrant is closing on February second at four P M. If you have an article, please get it in before the second at four P M. Next Monday night, the thirty first of January, the Select Board will do a focused meeting at six thirty P M on ARPA and infrastructure. I'm really excited about this meeting. Carrie's been working hard with her S M T. A lot of committees are going to be joining us with some of their ideas. We'd love to hear from the public. Should be a really good meeting. And then the following Monday, February seventh, as I said, we're having the caucus, which will be live. It must be live by state law. And so we'll have that at the townhouse. We'll probably have to start our select board meeting and then adjourn to go to the caucus and come back, depending on what our agenda looks like. I would say, actually, going back to next week, January thirty first, that meeting, the ARPA meeting, I think we should still do by Zoom. Unless, I I think the COVID is is coming down a lot, but there's still a lot of cases out there, so I'm leaning toward doing it by Zoom. If anybody disagrees, contact me on the board. If you disagree, we will talk about it. Okay. Diane, you still have your hand up, but I think that's from the earlier comment and when, yeah, okay. I think at this time, we are going to be, we're running a little early, which is exciting. But we're going to be going to the Minuteman Technical High School. I see that both Steve Ladue and Ed Buquillen are here. Which one of you would like to start?
I can go first, just Ed was on here, so, okay, good evening, everybody. I'm Steve Ladue. I'm the Concord Rep to the Minuteman School Committee. I'm also Chair of the Minuteman School Committee's Finance Subcommittee and Vice Chair of the the whole committee. So some of the main things we've been dealing with as a school committee and probably the most important thing is, as many of you know, Dr. Buquillen is retiring at the end of June. And we are in the process of trying to find a new superintendent. The past three Wednesdays, we have been interviewing candidates and our goal is to, we're meeting this Wednesday night with the goal of appointing a new superintendent to to take over when Ed retires. And Ed is, as many of you know, has been been the superintendent for, I think, fourteen years. He can probably tell you better than I, and and he's certainly been a real change maker for the school. The new building is certainly a testimony to Ed's Ed's fortitude and foresight. So I just want to let the board know about that. You know, and again, the school is, as all schools are, struggling with with the issues of COVID. And the good news is, you may recall about a year ago, we talked to the board about using some funds to build athletic fields, and those projects is pretty much done and should be ready for spring sports this coming spring. So one of the other things we've been working on, and I know we touched base on this with the board about a year ago, was that the that the district needed to look more closely at at OPEB other post employment benefits, mainly retiree health insurance and life insurance. As Chair of the Finance Subcommittee, I made a recommendation to the school committee that we put together a task force to look at the issue, and I believe I believe the chair had forwarded our our final recommendation, but so we had a task force that consisted of myself, a former school committee member, Jim Gamel, two staff members, Rich Ikannan, the Assistant Superintendent of Operations, and Lori Elliott, the District Treasurer, and Sandy Poehler, who is the Finance Director slash Deputy Town Manager of Arlington. So we came forth with recommendations. Our first year of recommendation of funding will be represented in the F Y twenty three budget. And in our goal, and and this this report was endorsed by the full school committee at their last regular meeting. And one of the things we'll be pursuing with by means of a policy with with the school committee is providing some funding for newly created positions. And if you read the report, we'd be funding each new position, an additional ten thousand dollars per year to be put in the OPEB OPEB Investment Fund. But I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Buquillen now to walk you through some of the issues we've been dealing with in more detail as well as our budget. We have a budget public hearing this coming Thursday night. We have to adopt a budget sixty days before our our first district towns town meeting, which is Lexington sometime, I think, late March. So so we'll be holding the hearing Thursday night. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. B.
Thanks, Steve. It's good to be here. I had I had sent a few slides. I don't know if I'm able to access them or if you were, if you've seen them.
Yes, they are in our packet and you might be able to share your screen if you want to or.
Okay, well, yeah, I can do that. And I can see also if there's a question as I'm going, just feel free to to ask me. Make sure I get the right one here. We have, there we go. And then we'll do this. There you go. Did you see that? Okay? Now we are. Okay. Yeah, this was what Steve was talking about, OPEB. What our current liability is, and there was a plan recommended by the task force and discussed at the last school committee and adopted. Can take question. Our overall budget is up a little under five percent for the operating and debt. Our assessments to member towns are up significantly this year, and that's really a function of enrollment. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Our overall enrollment has been steadily increasing, mostly especially from our member towns, from our nine member towns. We're projecting seven hundred students here in the fall. Most of them from member towns. There's eighty non member students that are completing their education at Minuteman. And the changes in assessment, if you look Concord, what I tried to do here was to kind of track the percent increase in enrollment and the percent change in assessments. And you can see for most of the nine communities, the assessments are pretty much tracking toward tracking along the lines of enrollment. With a few exceptions, Bolton has had a very large percentage increase, sixty percent, and their assessment's only gone up thirty five. That's a function of the four year rolling average. That was incorporated into the revised regional agreement. And you can see Concord, again, has had a large increase in enrollment or seventeen percent increase in enrollment in a I'm sorry, I'm reading my own numbers wrong here. Thirty two percent increase in enrollment in Concord. That trend is continuing. I'll show you a slide coming up. And about a seventeen percent increase in the total assessment for F Y twenty three. Now, this slide, it looks a little busy, but there's a lot of good stuff in here. This really tells the story of what's of what's happening and the impact on assessments and enrollment. You can see the blue line across the top here. That's the millions of dollars that we have had available to us each year from non member tuition to that we utilize to offset assessments for our member towns. This red line down here, that's hundreds of thousands of dollars of capital fee. You might recall back in two thousand eighteen nineteen, we got approval from the Department of Ed. In addition to charging a tuition, which that amount of tuition is determined by the Department of Ed, we could also charge a capital fee. And you may recall in some of those discussions that non member communities were not kind of paying their own way or bearing the weight of a capital project, and this allowed us to collect that. And again, it shows the increasing enrollment. That green line across the top here, that's our six hundred and twenty eight design enrollment. That's what the school was built to hold. And obviously, we're currently above that and we are expecting that trend to continue. This is Concord's assessment for F Y twenty three, one point five million. What I tried to show here was in the top line is the year over year enrollment increase, which was thirty two percent. Eight more students, but it's a large percentage. And then the four year rolling average, how it kind of mitigates this, the peaks and the valleys of large increases or drops in assessment based solely on enrollment. And Concord's operating share is increasing as well, not as much as the enrollment, because all of the towns are sending more students. And you see the debt, which Concord voted to exclude the debt in next year is about four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So it's a large percentage increase in the assessment. But it really tracks along enrollment. This is a little bit different breakdown of the preliminary assessment, and I say preliminary because the governor doesn't have a budget, and so there'll be some adjustments to this. In fifteen years, I've never adjusted it up from this point on. It's always been the same or lower. Some of the drivers in the F Y twenty three budget is the teacher's contract. We have we're in the third year next year of a three year contract. Health insurance, we're part of a health trust with four other regional vocational schools. The trust has not set the rates, but we've gotten a an estimate, and so we're holding at that estimate, which is a little bit high, but our transportation vendor has a five percent built in C P I increase. Building utilities, we're projecting an increase in costs. And again, the supply chain issues that have been impacting almost every part of the economy certainly impacts a regional vocational technical school because the supplies and materials that we the supplies and materials that we buy are what industry buys. And so we're anticipating an increase there. Also with additional students, we're using more things. Our OPEB contribution, we have two field, field trip work site buses that are over fifteen years old. And so we're looking at doing a lease purchase to replace two of them. Although we found out there's a new CEC, the Mass Clean Energy Council, I believe, has got a program for electric buses, and we're looking into that pretty, pretty good. And then a stabilization, our capital stabilization fund, continuing the fun, fun that, that was formed in 2016. So enrollment has shifted. That's kind of the big story. Almost all in-district enrollment, out-of-district enrollment is decreasing. And along with that, the revenue streams resulting in higher assessments. We're moving towards a, a school that I think everybody wanted us to build that's really supporting member town enrollment. And so the costs operating in debt are borne by the nine-member towns. Just to take a look at where we're tracking trending for next year's applications, I will tell you that Concord is up significantly over last year. Again, I believe as of last Friday, we had twenty-seven freshmen applicants for, from Concord for the fall. And this was as of a week ago. Our overall applications are up again. In district applications, we still have six more weeks of accepting applications. Applications close on February fifteenth. So the trend is continuing. But as you can see, the previous three years, we've accepted a large freshman class, and, and we just don't have the space to accept another class of one hundred and ninety-five freshmen. So we're estimating that we would only have room for about one hundred and seventy-five. We have the vocational technical space to accommodate more students, but we don't have the academic space or the smaller classroom special ed space. I'll remind folks that forty-seven percent of our students are on an IEP. But just in overall, if you look at just our operating separate from our, what I call our operating capital, which includes the ESCO payments, as well as the first payment on the, on the bond, the short-term bond we took out for the lighting, that's up almost nine percent. The MSBA project that is down a little bit, more a function of how we've timed some of our borrowing. For a time, we stretched it out, and then we still haven't closed the project with MSBA. That is going to happen in FY23. So some final borrowing is going to impact that. We've been pretty on target, though, when we've been estimating our, our debt costs on an annual basis. So another challenge for next year and for the year after is really, how do we build the capacity of the campus without borrowing any more money and doing any MSBA project additions? Well, there's two strategies. One involves the capital stabilization fund, which we've been funding at a good level for the last few years, and working with strategic partners, especially in our animal science area. Next year is the second year of animal science. It's currently operating in a space in school and has access to a science lab. And that's worked fine for this year and next year. But in year three, when we have juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, we're going to need to look at the east campus building that's there. And how can we renovate that for an actual functioning veterinary clinic? And we have a couple of potential partners from animal hospitals that we're working with. The renovation of that space is in design. We haven't had any hard numbers in regards to a budget or project timeline, but I expect those will be coming over the next two months. The project we do have going to expand capacity is on the north end of the building, where we had a foundation poured while the building was being built. Originally, we were going to use the foundation as storage to, our students could build a storage facility there. We're now going to be expanding the metal fab and welding shop areas. We expect that to open in late two thousand, in the fall of 2022, this fall. And that over four years would increase by, the capacity by thirty-two students. The animal science conservatively could add another sixty. So that's nearly a hundred students with these two projects. And we believe, and I'm confident we'll be able to do this through the capital stabilization fund, as well as probably some grants and strategic partnerships. This is just a look at the non-assessment revenue and it's, and the reduction in red there from tuition and capital fee. You can see our non-assessment revenue is down one point five million, down nineteen percent. And our total assessments for member towns is up fifteen percent overall. That's just another look at the overall budget. And I don't know if anyone has any questions about any of the slides or anything we've talked about.
I just wanted to point out one other, one other thing. And, you know, we are looking at, at ways to, as Ed said, you know, try to expand. But we're also, we have found out that the town of Watertown, which has significantly tuitioned in students for quite some time, is, is trying to look at their, their voc-ed options. So the school committee at our last meeting authorized the superintendent to make an overture to Watertown to see if they would consider joining the district at some point.
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I forgot that.
Okay, we have a question from Matt and then Henry.
Yeah, so last time that we met, I think it was, you were presenting a business plan around the fields and the lighting, you know, to tell kind of, we're making an investment in lighting in order to be able to get revenues for the fields. How is that working out?
Great. Well, the fields will, the, there are three fields, and all three are lighted. They're synthetic fields, made up with a sustainable fill product, which is made from yellow pine. And those fields will all be online this spring. We hired a facilities sort of event planner person to help us maximize our utilization, not only of the fields, but of the the facilities here, the, the meeting rooms, the theater space, the gymnasium, some of the other spaces. So and those other spaces, even despite COVID, we've had a slow and steady uptick in who we've brought in and the revenue that we're producing. I, I believe we're setting a really strong foundation with having a person who has experience in doing this from private industry, actually. And so when COVID is finally behind us, hopefully, I think we're going to be in a great position to start generating that revenue. But we haven't had a full year, Matt, of of the ability to rent our fields, so.
Okay. And then, I don't know, it's kind of, it seems kind of a crazy question, but you know, when I look at the OPEB situation, and I just think, well, how we got to this point, I just, I recall all those towns that had been, you know, members of this, and when those liabilities were incurred, and I just think, well, let's send them a bill. You know, I mean, that, that, it's partially a joke, but then I just think, well, you know, what was the agreement they signed up for? Because those liabilities are very significant. And, you know, now we're kind of left holding the bag. And, and it's a very painful thing when you consider, you know, that it's already, you know, an expensive educational model, you know, and that we're going to have to play catch-up now on all of those, you know, accrued liabilities.
Well, one of, one of the things Dr. B. and I have talked about is to talk to District Council to see what kind of legal remedies might be there for the, kind of the, the outliers that have pulled out of the district in terms of the OPEB liability. And I, I have to say, you know, having a municipal manager in this area that a lot of the towns have pulled out, they didn't, had done nothing about OPEB themselves. So that might be a tough nut. But, you know, I hear you, I hear you, Matt. I think that, you know, we, we should probably look at, look at some legal issues. Our, our, our study committee decided not to get into the legal slash politics of OPEB in regard to that. So that's why we didn't really address it in our report. But I think it certainly bears looking into.
Yeah, I mean, we're not starting from zero, but it's pretty close to zero compared to the, you know, number that we have to hit eventually.
Right. And, you know, and a lot of that, you know, frankly, when everybody else was dealing with OPEB, Minuteman District was basically fighting for its life with, you know, the threats of pulling out and communities pulling out. So OPEB really was on the back burner when a lot of the other, other entities were starting to, you know, put money aside.
Right. Henry?
I had a couple of questions about cost per pupil. If you were to take the, the total assessment against the town of Concord and divided that by the number of students that we have at the school, can you give me an approximate idea of what the cost to us is per pupil?
For next year's assessment? Yeah, I can. Hold on just a second. It's a rough, rough idea. Roughly around thirty-two thousand. That's including the debt, too.
That's a lot less than I expected.
Including debts, you mean including debt service?
Yes.
Okay, is that pretty close to what your across-the-board cost per pupil is?
For next year, yes.
Yeah, but with the rolling four-year tuition increase, right, and us on an upswing, we're probably a little, we're, we're taking advantage of that right now. When, once we hit, you know, steady state, it's probably going to be closer to forty K is my wild guess, but.
Oh, I mean, you just look at what, what Ed showed.
You look at a total, right.
What's happened at Bolton, right?
Yeah.
So it means that we certainly don't have a, in a financial incentive for students at the regional high school to go to the, to your school. It's, it's for reasons other than the economics.
For sure. That always has been true. It's specialized education. I mean, you know, vocational education.
Yeah. I mean, conventional education doesn't, doesn't fit the needs for some kids, and that's why we're here.
Yeah, I also, when this topic comes up, I remind folks that, you know, we really are running two schools. We have a full academic program that has to meet all the requirements of high rigorous academics. We have a full vocational school and two, really a staff of both. And forty-seven percent of our kids are on IEPs. You know, so when you look at all of those things and the fact what we have to pay people to come from industry to work at Minuteman, our salaries are very high. Our special ed costs are relatively low compared to other special ed programming. So it is a more costly form of education, and it does, you know, I really see us as a partner in economic development in our communities, too. We're, we're working on a, a one-page thing to show sort of what the financial impact is of having a school like Minuteman in your, as an option for you.
Well, and also to compare the cost that it would take to build those facilities in your own district and staff them. You know, that's, I think, what we have to think about. It's, it's not just like any old education. It's really specialized facilities and staff. And like you say, students with special needs that you would have to staff locally in the district to handle. So all of those things have to be considered.
Right.
I think the, the cost, the cost seems reasonable, especially with forty-seven percent of your students on ed plans.
Linda?
Well, thank you both for being here today. You, you mentioned that you'll be reaching out to, I guess you said Watertown, did I understand?
Yes, so a letter has gone out, but they're, they're in a, a process that could, you know, this might not impact us till maybe even FY24. So it's, it's a, it's a long process when they have to decide what they want, but.
Sure. So, you know, if, if in fact they end up becoming a member community, the, does that necessarily translate into less students that Concord would be able to send?
Yes, everyone's slot allocation would go down. We did the analysis. It's between three and four students, you know, would be, there would be fewer slots available per town on the average.
Okay. And my second, thank you for that. And my second question, Steve, you, you mentioned about, or maybe both of you mentioned about the, through policy, working with the school committee, that the recommendations from OPEB will be phased in. And it sounded like the ten thousand dollar per new hire recommendation, adding to the OPEB liability, you know, assessment was part of that.
Right.
Are the, is there a timeline for implementing the other recommendations?
Well, the, well, first, let me go back to the policy first, because we have a policy subcommittee. So my finance subcommittee is going to have to work with the policy committee to come up with a draft. And then we go through two readings before the policy is adopted at, at the school committee level. So that's, you know, that's two months in itself. So, you know, I'll, I'll be working with the Chair of the Policy Committee to start, start that, that movement. In terms of the other implementations, in terms of the fundings and, and things like that, you know, at this point, the current school committee has endorsed it. And, you know, it's somewhat similar to the Board of Selectment, that one, one, you know, one board can't bind a future board. But, you know, we have a pretty stable school committee, so I'm pretty confident that we would be moving forward with the other recommendations.
Okay, thank you. And that was good work done on all of that. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
I also want to comment that it's a real success story. It's true. I remember ten years ago that we were trying to build the building, and that was a huge hurdle. And, and there weren't a lot of students applying. And now we have so many students applying that you have to expand the building. And I really want to commend your creativity, Dr. McQuillan, in being able to expand in those two buildings without borrowing again.
That's the goal. And we'll, I'll make sure the new superintendent follows that.
So, so will the school committee.
And the public.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right. Great. Are there other questions from the board? Okay, then. Thank you so much, both of you for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you again soon.
Happy to be here.
Yep. Take care.
Okay, we are moving on to the Housing Production Plan Steering Committee. I think we have Marcia and Liz here. And let's see, I saw them before. I do see Liz. I saw, I see Marcia, okay. Are there other people joining us for this discussion?
Not this evening. This is the draft charge to the Steering Committee. And then the, the next task would be to identify members for that committee. We have not done that yet, but felt that it was important to get the charge approved.
Well, thank you very much for taking the initiative to put this charge together. My only comment I saw excluded was the Concord Municipal Housing Affordable Trust. There's two areas in the charge where you're listing organizations. And I think we should add that committee into both of those locations, unless there's a reason not to. But other than that, I thought it was very well done. And do other board members have questions, comments about this charge? Linda?
I also thought it was well done, and we're anxious to see this get underway. I, just a couple of suggestions. One is that in the section on background in the first paragraph, the, it might be helpful, there's a sentence that reads, "The HPP identifies housing needs in the community and the goals and strategies the town will use to identify and achieve or maintain the ten percent threshold." and the goals and strategies the town will use, uh, to identify and achieve or maintain the ten percent threshold, da-da-da-da." So, uh, I'm just, um, suggesting that you may want to insert over the next five years, um, to identify the goals and strategies the town will use over the next five years, just to give people a sense of shelf life of these housing production plans.
Very good.
And, um, Terry already mentioned the inclusion of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. One place is at the end of the first page, just to, under the, the steering committee will. And the second location is, um, under membership, uh, for one representative from, and it lists the housing groups, but didn't include the Affordable Housing Trust. That was the second location.
Okay. So one representative from that group's inclusive of the, the Affordable Housing Trust.
Correct. Yeah. And then I just had a, um, actually a couple of questions. Under membership, um, it says the term of office shall be for up to nine months, unless the term is extended by vote of the select board. And I'm wondering if there's any way to be more specific, like to say through October or through November, whatever your target date is, just because it just makes our life easier in terms of trying to approve these appointments. Uh, so that was, and you may not be able to, but that's one, if you could look at that, that would be good.
I, I think that would be fine. Um, the contract with our consultant is, uh, we were aiming to get this submitted for the fall, so, um, Liz, do you have a, a suggestion or recommendation of what we think might, we might need? Do you want to, do you want to extend it through December of, uh, twenty-twenty-two or try to get it done before then?
Well, we, we don't know exactly when the census information is going to be available. Our latest information says September. Um, so if we want to, um, go back and capture the census information and, and, you know, revise the materials that we have to date and then review those again, I think we might need to be, you know, open to an extended period of time.
So would the select board be willing to, um, have this through December thirty-first of twenty-twenty-two?
Yeah.
Yes, if you think that, um, that gives them only three months or four months to work, though, if the date is not available until September.
Well, we, we, oh, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, what, when we talked about this last, I think that the direction that the, that we agreed was that the information would go forward with what's available now. And there's survey information that's published annually. It's just not as comprehensive as the census. Um, so aside from the SHI perspective, just in terms of demographic housing need, so that we would go forward with the information that is available now, do all the public engagement part and the workshops, and then adjust as we need to on the backend. So it's not starting new again in September, but it's more of a revision forward.
Okay, so that sounds really good. There's one thing I want to clarify then. I, I think you said you're targeting the consultant to come in the fall. So, no.
No, we, we have the consultant on board. Uh, we have two consultants, really. Um, one is our, our community outreach consultant, and that will be a fairly aggressive, um, endeavor this spring and through the summer, and they will help us prepare the outline for the housing production plan. Um, the Regional Housing Services Office will also be preparing information for us, uh, using current data. And then once the census information is available, hopefully by September, um, the RHSO staff would then be available to help us, um, revise or update that final information. So, um, it, the final report will be based on information that is current.
Thank you. That clarifies it. Thank you. Matt?
So, you know, we have had several housing production plans in the past, two thousand and four, two thousand and ten, two thousand and sixteen. We've never had a committee to supervise this housing production plan. Why are we seating one now? We have a goal to streamline, uh, the, the number of town boards and committees, and we're seating a new committee for, to produce a plan that we've produced three times in the past, as far as I know, and probably more of them, without having to seat a committee.
Marcia, or you want to take that one, or?
I've just, I don't have an answer to that. Um, there is always been, um, a we felt it would be a more robust conversation to have, uh, committee involved that, uh, this way people could be out and about, um, given that we have been through COVID and getting the public input in a more robust way is very useful and very helpful. And so we look to our neighboring communities and what they have done. Um, and having a steering committee is a way of, of helping provide that focus and that outreach that may or not be possible with just town staff or a consultant. So I think.
In the past, we've done surveys, I know, as part of the HPP, right? And the consultant led that process.
Well, we've also had some, uh, fairly robust committees. We have the Affordable Housing Trust, uh, which was another group that predated the Concord Housing Development Corporation, and then we had Affordable Housing Groups that were involved, so, um, I.
They're still there. They could be involved, right?
Well, well, uh, so specific groups that have helped with the housing production plan have looked at the town's uh, resources and have provided a sounding board for the, the planned production plan. So, um, while we haven't had a specific steering committee, we've had groups involved in that, that process. Um, Liz, I think you had something you wanted to add to that.
Well, I was just going to augment what you say. I think in the past, um, so it was, it was the RHSO and the same consultant, um, who did it the last time. Um, and the function of the steering committee was done on a more ad hoc basis. So the survey was done, the actual outreach and workshops were, were held in public forums. But, um, in terms of steering the effort, um, there were people who were helping to steer the effort but weren't formally charged in this same kind of formality way. I'm just going to say from, from, uh, from the consultant working on the project. Um, and so it was led, um, by town staff with the assistance of, of some of the volunteers. Um, so I think that this brings it more to a, I'm not going to say transparent, but an open process for the public to lead the effort versus town staff.
Okay. Other comments? Um, Linda, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I do. Yeah. Um, I do think, um, I hear Matt's question, and it's a valid one. Um, I do think we are in a different time, however, not only because of COVID, but, um, I think since Envision Concord went into place, there's been much more emphasis on, um, you know, cross, um, collaboration, um, between departments, between, uh, individual groups. And that takes, uh, a more concentrated and concerted effort, and I think some of our more recent committees have been able to do that in terms of facilitating that kind of outreach. So I don't want to necessarily be defending one way or the other, but I do see that side of it. Um, the, the other, um, area that I, I wanted to comment on, and maybe my colleagues also have, um, some other comments in this section as well, had to do with the membership itself. I see the attempt there, the good attempt there to have, um, a cross-section of interests represented, not only in terms of the housing groups, but, uh, members from the community at large. But I also, um, I, I'm also wondering if, if the intention is to have not have more than one representative from any one group. And if in fact, under the, um, first membership category of one representative from the housing groups, um, or other organization that have a mission to create affordable housing, does that mean a group like Habitat or some other nonprofit affordable housing group? And if that was the case, if only one representative is coming from that entire group, do we really have co-, um, you know, um, the Concord Housing Group interest, uh, represented? So, so there was some, some questions that were raised there. And I could see where, for example, um, not that you would, this would happen necessarily, um, but that we could have someone from the Concord Housing Development Corporation be the representative, but we could also have someone from the Concord Housing Development Corporation be the, the person who had experience in housing development. So we could have, so I'm, you know, I'm just trying to see what the, the, sort of the philosophy is there or what you're attempting to accomplish. And then in that same vein, you talked about having, um, representative from either the zoning board of appeals or planning board, um, with at least prior experience. And then you also named the planning board as, um, having liaison. So in that case, you could have two representatives from planning, in a sense, uh, one that had direct experiences was one who had current experience. So I, I'm just trying to get some sense of what the real goal was in this section, and there may be some tweaking that needs to be done. That's all.
Well, I know that, um, in looking at the, um, as you go through the housing production plan, i- it's really important to have people who understand the how, the goal of affordable housing and the, the tools that are available to get there. Uh, so that's why the first group is, is primarily a funding source or has done some kind of affordable housing development in general. Um, the, the planning board or zoning board of appeals, they deal with the comprehensive permit process, at least the Board of Appeals deals with comprehensive permits. And the planning board is often looking at, um, ways of adding of, an affordable housing component to various special, special permit types of development. So that was the thinking behind that group, um, because that is sometimes viewed as a hurdle with, uh, with, when we're conquered zoning is primarily residential, and it's, there seems to be difficulty in identifying, um, affordable housing opportunities. And so, um, I thought it would be really important to have that group represented as well, since it's, it's sort of the legislative component of developing affordable housing. But that's why we're here, is to hear your, get your input and, and hear your concerns and your ideas here.
Okay. So certainly, certainly you're, you know, I certainly don't disagree in any way with what you've just said. I mean, I think those areas are important. It's where there might be overlap or duplication that I'm just raising. Yeah.
Uh, well, the, the liaison role, because both the select board and the planning board need to adopt and promote this to the Concord, uh, to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And that's why we felt it was important to have a liaison position.
Okay. Henry?
Um, does, does the scope of this, um, this, uh, um, committee also involve a consideration of changes in zoning that would be necessary or would facilitate the creation of, uh, more affordable housing? Um, and is it somewhat, uh, another, another approach to, uh, the housing issue, uh, as a, uh, as responsive essentially to chapter forty B, uh, which is, um, um, kind of more defensive than it is creative in terms of finding ways to encourage the creation of housing, uh, that is affordable and, uh, creates housing that is actually needed rather than responsive to the requirements of the statute.
In past housing production plans, they have identified ways that it might be achieved. They have not done the specific language. They've sort of directed that to the planning board or the, uh, or other groups to take that on. So they wouldn't provide specific language, but, um, concepts or ideas or, or identifying where different types of housing might be needed, um, such as the, the idea of additional dwelling units, the granny flats, the, um, housing for certain groups of people, um, that has come out of different plans over time.
Now, I, I gather from reading this, um, this charge, that essentially the, um, if we adopt a housing plan that is approved by the state, that that is a, gives us a line of defense against forty B applications. But to what extent does that continue to be effective if we are unable to, uh, actually implement the housing plan that we have created?
Go ahead, Liz.
Yeah. So, um, thank you for the question. So in a housing plan, um, approved by the state, uh, provides a basis to then move into safe harbor after units are created. So you're exactly right that you need to, uh, create the units in order to achieve the safe harbor that you referenced for forty B. Um, having a plan is not in and of itself sufficient for creating protection against forty B. But it is the first step, and creating the units then on top of the approved plan would provide the safe harbor. And it's a very short duration. I mean, it's a one-year or at most two-year safe harbor. But it, there is a level of protection for that period of time. I hope that answers.
Clarifying that. That's, that's been a point of confusion. Thank you for clarifying that. Great. So what, what's the will of the board, um, in terms of this charge? Do we want to make some tweaks? Do we want another week to think about it? Um, where are we on this? Is everyone asleep?
No, I just, you know, I feel like the Housing Development Corporation, the Affordable Housing Trust, and the planning board in particular, all need to be involved in the development of this. But I feel like it almost lets them off the hook to have a liaison, you know, and, and just have a separate committee. I, I actually think an ad hoc approach uh, is a superior approach here. Um, it does mean a little bit more work for the consultants, uh, because they don't have a seated committee that they can just, you know, work with directly. Um, they're going to have to, as in the past, uh, work with different advocates in, in different contexts. But those groups, the, the affordable housing groups, and, you know, have met on their own, you know, um, i- in cross-functional ways to look at, uh, open plots of land that might be available for future housing. And so, you know, there is a strong will and, and, and interest in level of participation, I think, that's available. I just think that, you know, we have successfully produced these plans in the past, and I, I just don't, I, I, I don't know why, um, we have to do it this way this time. You know, if we had had problems or, you know, that our plans weren't effective, that would be different. But I, I actually think it's been a pretty reasonably well-run process in the past. Um, so I, I guess I'm still not really in favor of, of creating a standing committee or steering committee for this. Um, but again, you know, if the rest of the board feels like we should, um, and create another committee, um, I guess we could do it. Um, I, I do want to say too, though, you know, when, if we do proceed with this, uh, under background, it talks about achieve or maintain the ten percent threshold. I would like to say, you know, achieve or exceed, because I don't want to just look at it as, hey, you know, let's just try to get to ten percent. I mean, there, for many reasons, it's not necessarily what we should be doing.
Right. That's a good point, that last one. Let's make that change. So what do other members think? Do you want to have a steering committee? Um, is this the right charge? Oh, are we ready to act tonight? Do we need more time to think about it? Henry?
I think bald heads think alike. So I have the same reservations, if not more, so than, uh, than Matt has on this. And maybe at least we should, uh, think about it for a while before we. And maybe at least we should think about it for a while before we dive in on it.
Harry, I'm afraid you may have doomed us to being a minority, however.
Well.
Well, I have to say, I'm pretty neutral. I could go either way, but my. When I first got the packet. My immediate question was, what do we need a committee for? And. Because I have never heard of having a committee to do the housing production plan. It's usually done by staff or maybe staff and consultants. So I was a little confused. But. Listening to Marsha and Linda, you know, times have changed. Maybe we want more engagement and we want to go across silos. So I could vote either way. I don't have a strong feeling either way.
So that's two and a half votes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I found steering committees for Weston and Cohasset. Trying to find others.
Susan, do you have an opinion?
I would have to call myself neutral as well. I could, I could go either way.
And Linda, do you feel really strongly that we should? Try and do this tonight, that we should take some more time to get over?
Well, you know, another question that comes to mind, you know, I'm acutely aware of how stretched. Our resources are for some of our departments who are charged with getting these tasks done. And. I'm wondering if Marsha or. Liz would like to speak to. Is there some capacity? Issue here that has influenced you in terms of putting this forward in this format?
Right, and I'd like to add to that question. Is it, does it take more staff time? To. Do it yourself or more to have to manage? A committee? Either way, you have staff time, so.
Exactly, I think it's an equal amount of time. I'm really perplexed because this, to me, this sounds like you fully endorse all the prior housing production plans. And you have great faith in the. In the work of the Planning Division and the Regional Housing Services Office to provide you with a document that. You are comfortable with or at least are willing to adopt and put forward. But knowing how things have been reacted to in the past, where it's just staff bringing it forward. I'm a little surprised. I.
Okay, now I understand.
Well, it's been consultants that have produced the report for the most part. I mean, I guess, yes, the staff's heavily involved, but also I just, I was on the planning board for, you know, one of them. And on the ZBA for another one. And, you know, it wasn't like. It just showed up one day all done. So. It is part of the job that those boards and committees need to do. I mean, maybe not so much the ZBA, but the planning board in the course of their years' work.
I think, I think in Marsha's last statement, I think I'm starting to understand it. And see if I have this right, Marsha. There's been a number of initiatives. That. Well, several of them have come from DPLM. That you have brought forward and then. The citizens. Have reacted and said, oh, well, wait a minute, we wanted more input. Where did this come from? And so you're trying to create maybe a more transparent. Process.
Correct, I mean, I think back to 2008 when we had. A committee that was looking at West Concord and put some ideas forward. And then all of a sudden, people reacted in such a way to say, oh, my gosh. Where did this come from? And there was had been no. No formal outreach and there had been no opportunity to provide input. And all of a sudden I was being railroaded. And so I. I find it just intriguing that the Select Board would be. Not interested in having a steering committee, so it's just.
I think it's not so much in not having a steering committee as being challenged with the bigger problem of having, you know, sixty committees or whatever our number is at this point. That. And we keep being told that staff resources to staff these committees is so tight. So, you know, I think we're responding to a number of issues at that level.
Right. So I'm going to suggest that we do some more thinking about this.
Take another week and. I think just having this conversation is valuable. And having this document, maybe we don't have a steering committee, but we use this as a. As a guide to say, these are the groups that we need to talk to and have involved in the process moving forward. And then. We'll go from there.
Right, I think it's an excellent document. I think we definitely need outreach. But Linda's correct, we have a lot of pressure about. Frankly, we're trying to reduce the number of committees and that was one of our mandates this year. And instead, we created five or six new committees this year. So we're going backwards in a way, but. Anyway. Yeah, well, we'll take some more time to think about it. I also would like to. Talk with Carrie offline and see what her opinion is and. Let's practice around a little more. Definitely need a housing production plan. And it's very good news that we're getting started, thank you.
And we have a consultant on board.
Well, you know. If I had known that you didn't want a steering committee, I would, we could have gotten started sooner. So that's, that's very interesting and intriguing to me. Because we talked about this a month ago. And I told you I was bringing a, you know, a charge for the steering committee. To you, so.
Right, and I thought that was kind of unusual, because I had never seen one before in another town. But I thought, well. Let's, let's see what the proposal is. And. You know, I think there's some merit in it, definitely. I'm neutral, like I said, I see it both ways, so. Line some more, try to bat this around some more. Okay, thank you.
Harry, is it, sorry, is it realistic that we can get to this next week? Because if they have a consultant on board already, I can understand they're feeling some. Time constraints here as well.
Okay, do you have a consultant on board already for this?
I thought that's what I heard.
Yes, 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 we do. We were waiting to meet with her once we had the Steering Committee together. That was her proposal. And so. If there is no committee, then we will schedule that meeting and get started.
Okay, well, that's an important consideration. We will not be getting to this next week because we're having a focus meeting on ARPA. And we try to just do. On the focus meeting nights, stick to the main topic that we have. We could, however, get to it the following week. February seventh. Or we could. Take a vote now to have you start moving ahead. And we could still, you could still come back to us. If you. Feel in a few weeks that we need a steering committee, we could take that up again at that time.
What do you think, Liz?
You know, it's the, I think we talked through all of the pros and cons and it can work either way. It's more staff driven. Without the Steering Committee. I mean, that's, that's, that's what it is. And but that might be. Okay, housing can be a topic where people. Want more input. I mean, there'll certainly be, you know, a survey and, you know, a housing forum, if not two. But in terms of, let's say, the community comes up with fifty housing goals, I don't know, thirty, something. And how to prioritize those and synthesize those into a manageable number for a plan. That's kind of what the Steering Committee does or the staff and the people who are leading the effort and bring it forward. And some people feel in that process that. You know, what happened to, I had this great idea and what happened to that in that process, right? And so that's, that's just a kind of a, you know, example or, you know, of what the. What the Steering Committee can bring versus the staff and consultants. But it can work whichever way. I also hear that you're trying to reduce committees and that's important. And at that level, you know, that's a, that's a real consideration. So. I think that you've, you've heard both sides of the coin. And. I think that the timing of getting started, though, probably would be good. The consultant is busy with other engagements and we have delayed to this point getting started. And so I think that that would be helpful.
Matt?
Yeah, I just don't want to confuse the sort of reluctance to create a new committee with a desire not to have a robust process. Or, you know, to have a lot of engagement. We want both of those things, you know. And as in the past, I believe that it was a collaborative process. And, you know, we. That there are people in town that are already set up to look at these things. They, it's just not their full time job. It's part of their overall responsibilities. And so. You know, that I just want to say, I think we can do it in a more ad hoc fashion. Because it's kind of the usual suspects, if you will. I don't know how else to put it, but in that, you know, I'm very interested in participating or, you know, engaging, however you'd like. And I know Linda has been in the past, so, you know, we'll probably have an arm wrestling match over who should do it. But. I just wanted to be clear about that. It wasn't like to say, hey, go away, make this report, thanks. Well, you know, we'll see you later when it's done.
Right, I totally agree. We definitely want it to be collaborative, we want outreach, we want the forums, we want the survey. Definitely need the public engaged, so. If all of that can be accomplished without a committee, then I guess we could go ahead with that way.
I think that's, that's the plan with or without a committee. So I don't think it's a difference of what kind of outreach is done. You look at like the envisioned Concord plan, right? Like, so there was a group that, all that outreach, but there was a group that synthesized and. You know, help prepare the materials from all that outreach.
Okay, I think this, having mentioned that as an. An example, I think there were multiple points of input. For what that final report looked like. So in other words, not just open forums, but an opportunity to see draft one, draft five, draft seven. Whatever, you know, whatever the iteration is with an opportunity to. Input that way as well, which made it the robust process that it was. And I, I, I think. Not that you need, you could incorporate. A number of points of. Input beyond just two forums, for example. To accomplish that.
Right. I think exactly, the RFP for the consultant, I think, outlined the, you know, essentially the number of meetings, the number of forums, the number of surveys. And that was publicly bid and all of that. And it was a set budget from the CPC. So to the extent that, that, you know, a different approach could be. You know, deployed without impacting the budget, I think, is great. You have to really see, you know. If that remains. Accurate.
Yeah, that's a good point, yep. Okay, any other thoughts on this? Okay, well, thank you very much. It's definitely going to be an important project. No matter how we do it, it's overdue and we need to get going. So thank you very much for working on it. And.
Carrie, are we going to give them some kind of decision point here this evening? Because it sounds like they need it.
Right, it sounds to me like we do not have a motion on the floor right now to. Adopt a charge for the Steering Committee. So I think we are proceeding for now without it. But if Marsha and Liz feel. That that's going in the wrong direction in the future, they can come back. And ask us again to reconsider. Is that a workable plan?
That sounds like a workable plan.
Okay, just winging it on the fly here, trying to get something going here. Okay, definitely come back to us if it's not working out and we'll talk again.
Very good.
Thank you. Sorry, there was, sorry, there was a surprise, but I think this was considered with the input from the board where they stand tonight. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on now to amending the middle school building committee charge. Do you want to talk about that? Matt, you're on mute.
Yeah, sure. So as you all know, at the special town meeting, the voters approved the spending for the new. Middle school and of course, there is a townwide vote coming up. February third, but meanwhile, we need to get ourselves. Aligned to the next phase of the project. So a couple of different things need to take place to do that. I think the most important thing is in membership. So we have a slot. For a resident that is, you know, knowledgeable in building construction, somebody who's a general contractor, you know, a professional in the industry. And to date, while we've had people that, we have had someone who is an architect who builds schools for a living, which has been fantastic, is a co-chair. We haven't had someone from the, the construction side as much. And so it was, we are entering the construction phase of the project. This is really the time that we really need to bring that member on more than ever. So we have a candidate. And there is already a earmarked slot on the committee for that type of expertise. But then we have another problem, which is that we already have a full slate of citizen members. And so, you know, to make more space for the, to backfill that construction member, we need to add one more. Member of the public. And we have in the past had Heather Bout, who's, who was originally a school committee member. And then has been serving since her school committee term ended in the capacity to help us with communications. And as you could tell, the communications of the middle school building committee have been excellent. And we would like to keep her on, even though her term technically would have ended the end of this month. So the idea here is add one more member. For residents than to. Have, and at the same time, Carrie Lefleur and Superintendent Hunter did look at their members and have considered the possibility of shifting. Their members to non-voting status. So that would mean that the voting members would be the resident members of the committee. So that's. I think in a nice approach, it would, I think, align the committee well for the future. And so I've implemented that in this. Proposal. Then the final thing has been to look at the overall purpose and the. The duties and powers and duties of the committee. And realize that when the charge was originally written, it was, of course, before the feasibility study and the schematic design. And now that we've completed those, those duties are obsolete. And just to get a much more focused charge going forward, we would just zero in on the construction phase tasks that are ahead of us. So those are the. All of the changes that are proposed. So those are the, all of the, the changes that are proposed here.
Thank you, Matt, for working on this. Um, Susan? Susan, you're on mute.
And by the way, I have found one typo in this, which is that there in the third to the last bullet under membership and operations, it was intended to strike the word six and replace it with seven. That's very important.
Yeah, that's what I was looking at.
Yeah, so that was a, a mistake, uh, in the, in the dra- uh, the redlining process. Yeah.
So, um, at a certain point in the process, the, one of the existing co-chairs, um, resigned from the committee. I'm trying to figure out how, what happened then. And I,
I think that we got Peter Fischelis as a new member at that point.
Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah. All right. All right. Okay. This looks very good. I went, I did look over, you know, before and after and, and saw how you wisely eliminated the tasks that are no longer relevant since we're at this phase in the project. Um, and it makes sense to me what you've done. So thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And that, that reminds me, um, I'm not sure if, um, the version I had been looking at had a different typo. It had, um, article fourteen, that should be article one. And I don't know if that got correct.
Yeah, I think that that's more a, a side effect of the formatting of the document. So it's a four and you see that it's in red and it has a strike through, but the strike through is also the same level as the middle of four. So you just can't tell that it struck through.
Thank you. Okay. Other discussion on this? Henry?
Um, uh, would it be inappropriate to add, uh, one additional function, uh, to the, uh, to the committee? Uh, and that would be, uh, to, uh, ask the committee to also consider and implement where possible, uh, cost savings and, um, off, cost offsets to the, uh, to the project so as to minimize the impact on the tax rate.
So I would say that the offsets task is really our task, that we should not try to delegate that to the building committee. It, because the scope is potentially well beyond the, the construction of the school or the, the skills of the people on the committee that are focused on the construction of a, of a new school. So I, I wouldn't delegate that from us. I think it really is our responsibility as, as a board, uh, to be leading that process. Now, as far as, uh, finding additional cost savings, I think that that is important. And the extent that I've made it in this document is under purpose. I've highlighted that within the budget, right? Within, let's see, where is it stated? Based on the scope defined and the funding approved under article one. So basically, stay within that funding is the, the message there.
Well, I actually agree with Henry, although, although I hear your point now. I'm wondering if we could just strengthen that bullet point that you just read, Matt, which I don't have right in front of me, but maybe, maybe not just stay within the funding, but look for creative ways to save costs. Or like work with the select board and finance committee to have creative cost reductions or some, you know, we don't have to delegate it.
Right. But, you know, just to give a, for instance, right, we wouldn't expect this committee to come up with a way to use the PBD site.
Right.
Okay. That, that's what I'm, and we wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't be looking to this committee to figure out how to rent out the school to increase revenues. That would be the superintendent's job, this, the, the school staff's job, it would seem to me. I, I just don't see a building committee as being tasked with, hey, here's how we're going to get the biggest gymnasium revenues.
Well, I think though that there are some of these alternative revenues, like solar comes to mind, where they may have to design it a certain way in order to accommodate something that CMLP needs or, uh, it's sort of,
Isn't that CMLP's responsibility? They're the ones that are going to be, you're in a business plan for the solar.
Right. But they might, um, have to work cooperatively on, um, this, with this group to do design. Um, sort of coming under the category of, we don't know what we don't know kind of a thing. So I was thinking, I'm just putting in something like work cooperatively with these other groups that are looking at creative cost savings measures. Susan?
Yeah, I, I wasn't thinking either of, um, something like the, what's to do with puberty or renting out the facilities, but it, as there's, as this design and construction, deep designing construction process is beginning, there must be a, a number of decision points where they can say, we can use this material at this cost or this material at this cost or wallboard or, or, or something where there are opportunities to make decisions that impact the overall cost, but have it having directly to do with the construction and of the project, not, not any of the, um, subsidiary sources of revenue that might exist. I mean, isn't that what they would do? Is that?
Oh, yes. I mean, and I think that, again, under the current circumstances, to stay within the budget, those kinds of, I think, you know, critical decisions are going to be made all along the way. So it's, I don't think it's that the, the building committee doesn't feel like they need to be, um, thrifty, you know? I think that they already have that sense. Um, but I, yeah, if we can find a quick way to, um, maybe tighten that language, that I'm fine with that.
Matt, where is that exact bullet point? I'm trying to find it right now.
So it's on one, two, and in the redline version, three, four, five, six, uh, line six, it says, you know, design phase and the funding approved under article one at the January twenty twenty-two special town meeting.
Okay, wait a minute. I must be in the wrong section. What? Oh, I see.
This is page sixty-three of our packet.
Oh, yeah. But where is the part about staying within budget?
It's, it's that, it, it, so to read the whole sentence, it says, yeah, um, well, it's a very long sentence, but to replace the two existing facilities based on the scope defined in the feasibility study and schematic design phase and the funding approved under article one at the January twenty twenty-two special town meeting. That's what it says.
Right. Um,
You put something in, like during this process, the building committee is encouraged to, uh, continue to collaborate with the finance committee and the select board.
Yeah.
To identify additional cost savings.
Yeah, that, that's right. That's, that's the spirit of it.
Okay, so, uh, let's just make sure we get actual chapter and verse on this.
And it can go in the tasks and duties section. It could be one of those both.
I, I think that the tasks and duties is, is very kind of, um, uh, what'd you call it? You know, uh, it's very much task oriented. It's not principle oriented. So I, I would prefer to see it in the, in the purpose.
Okay.
Personally. Um, but, okay, I, I don't think we should make that sentence.
A new sentence.
Yes, it's definitely a new sentence. We don't want to add that. Okay, how about this? At the end, it says the commu- the committee shall engage, ensure community engagement throughout the planning and execution of the final design and construction expectation. There'll be multiple opportunities, process, solicit, uh, community feedback. And then we, at the very end, I think we should just add throughout the process.
The committee will engage with the select board and finance committee to continue to to see.
Identify.
Yeah, okay.
Additional cost savings.
Right. And I, and I would say select board and finance committee and superintendent.
Okay.
Um, well, if, if we've settled that, I have one, one more comment. And that is that, um, this, uh, charge, uh, seems to impose a very pivotal role and a, a great degree of responsibility on the town manager to run the project. That's, uh, uh, she is charged with reviewing contracts and approving all kinds of aspects of this. And I, I would like to hear from Carrie whether this is something that, um, she feels comfortable with and whether or not if, if such extensive responsibilities are going to be imposed on her office, which is, you know, after all, is managing a hundred million dollar construction project, whether this requires additional staffing in her office.
Carrie? Sure. Um, so it is very common for this type of project to be under the jurisdiction and spending authority of the town manager with a building committee. It is the building, the building committee is working very hard, uh, with the OPM and the designer. So it's, it's not that the town manager is out there all by his or herself. There are a lot of professionals that are involved in this process. There's a lot of, um, accounting that goes along with this. So this is definitely a heavy lift on the finance department. But we do have the staff in place and coming into place to be able to manage that. We will set up an accounting of the project that would be very similar to if the project was MSBA eligible. So we would be using that model to do all of the financial tracking. And, uh, it, it is, it is a very large project that is going to involve a lot of time. But there are a lot of people that are involved in this and invested in seeing it, be undertaken in the best possible, uh, process. And so I'm not looking or expecting that there will be additional staff added in order to, um, to carry out the duties that are required.
Oh, I want to ask a follow-up. Um, Carrie, when, when you thought about taking this job as interim town manager, um, were you fully aware that the interim town manager would be, um, supervising this project?
Well, I, I absolutely was because I have attended most of your meetings for the last couple of years. I can tell you in, in my previous position, before coming to the town five years ago, I was a town manager and oversaw a middle school, high school project that was, you know, probably about half of, half of the budget of this, but I had just come off of, of doing that project. So I understand the role and responsibility of the town manager. It's the same, um, in this project as it was in that last project. And, um, so yes, I, I was fully aware of that when I took the job.
That's what I thought. Just wanted to confirm. Okay, uh, Linda?
So, um, I was a bit surprised when I saw that there were so many, um, positions that were marked as ex officio and basically all the, the, um, town and, um, school, um, staff. So, Matt, could you speak to the discussions that went on on the committee regarding that? Because I, I think that's a, a huge change that we should not, that we should think carefully about.
Yeah. So, I mean, it hasn't been discussions that have been happening in the committee, but, uh, Carrie was the first to raise this because she noted that as the town manager, she will be, uh, signing contracts and approving expenses. And so to the degree, you know, that she is at the same time voting to spend these monies, you know, as part of the committee, that does seem, you know, maybe not strictly as a conflict of interest, but certainly it doesn't have a clear, um, you know, uh, separation of roles. So I, I thought that it was a great initiative. And then when you think about, you know, that certainly the finance person on her department is a, is a similar kind of position, um, that, that, a- and then she went forward and, and suggested that all of staff could be that way. Um, I think too, if you think about the, uh, a- and then after that, um, you know, Superintendent Hunter, uh, said that she talked with the school committee and they agreed that that would be the right approach for the school staff as well. So that's where we've landed so far. Now, the only other discussion that I've had is that, uh, I've heard uh, from someone that, uh, you know, there's, sometimes the superintendent is the one voting member, um, from the staff side. So tha- that would also have the extra benefit of that it would be, um, then a, a non-even number of voting members, you know, and for quorum, it, again, it wouldn't make any difference to the number of people for quorum, or in fact, the number of votes needed to win a, 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 you know, to close the, uh, to pass a motion. But, uh, that might be the right way to do it. I can say too, that on the MSBBA form, you know, there is this set of, of people. I mean, we've had a couple of additions like the sustainability director, but, you know, that, um, these, most of these roles are specified by the MSBA for a building committee, but they also on the same forum say, please indicate which of these are non-voting. And, you know, in a brief survey that I did of other towns, uh, building committees, you know, that, that typically, um, those staff positions were, were indicated as non-voting i- if they were out, you know, if they were actual members. So, so that's, yeah, I think it's been unusual up until now to have such a large number of staff voting members on our building committee. It's, I think we're actually moving to more of a typical rather than a typical model here.
I agree with that. Yep.
Yeah. So you said you looked at a, a limited number of other communities. Um, so, you know, I, I, I don't know how representative that is, but I'll take your word for it. I, I guess I'm particularly concerned that, um, the school superintendent does not have a vote there. And, you know, uh, having watched many of the meetings of the school building committee, uh, uh, this last year and the excellent work they've done, uh, it was a balance, however, of opinions coming in from both staff and, and committee members that I think resulted in the, the positive outcome that existed there. So, uh, I, I am concerned about just across the board, um, making all these people ex officio. And it's, just felt the need to express that view.
I would think that the ex officio people would still attend all the meetings, express their opinions, be part of a lively debate. And, you know, they're the ones with the technical expertise. So, um, but, but it makes sense to me that they're not voting members, but that they should be absolutely involved in all the details of the meetings.
I mean, it's very much like with the select board, the planning board, the CBA. I mean, you know, we have town staff we rely upon and take direction from in many respects. Um, but they are not voting members of our committees now, you know, so I think that that's another tradition we should think in about in concrete.
Susan?
Um, I, I agree about having the staff be ex officio. And one of the things that comes to mind is if you're the superintendent or the town manager, you know, a, a leader of one segment of the school, of the process, and you have three or four subordinates there as well, uh, how many of them are going to vote against, uh, in an opposite direction from what you do? Not that that should be an issue, but I think probably it I, I would be. And so to eliminate that, that that if you have these, uh, the staff be ex officio, then that's not um. I don't mean to infer that that I ever saw that happen or I, but I'm just saying that it puts, it might put other staff in an awkward position.
And if nothing else, it'll make our roll call go, votes go faster. But I, I would, I, I would say maybe we should restore uh the superintendent as a voting member. Um, and, you know, that would be to me, you know, a way to again, have, have some representation, voting representation there, avoid the issue that Susan just brought up. Um, it still have, uh, you know, have an odd number of members of the committee. So there's not tie votes, even though, you know, a tie vote doesn't pass. So it's not really an ambiguity. Um, and uh proceed from there. One thing I want to note, by the way, is that, you know, we we do need to proceed on this tonight, I think, not to create a gap in the membership uh process because uh at least you know, one of the members, Heather's, uh, you know, is going to end it on January thirty first. And so we have the opportunity to do the nomination and the, and the uh appointment before then. You know, if we proceed tonight with the change in the charter.
Right. And we also have um our volunteer, um Steve, um.
Yeah. And he could join as a voting member in our next.
Right. And he's been very patient. He's been waiting several months. So we are eager to get him on this committee because he has a construction experience. Linda?
So if the superintendent were um included as a voting member, I'm wondering if Carrie would think about the, the role of town manager uh differently in that situation in terms of being a voting member.
Uh, so I, I would not. Um, I, I do think under, if we were following the M S B A process, if it is very likely that the superintendent would be a voting member and the town manager would not be a voting member.
Thank you.
Because the town manager is um approving contracts. So is that, is that why?
Yes.
Other comments? The discussion? Okay. I think we are ready for a motion then.
Okay, um. Uh, I'm just trying to make sure I've got all of the amendments that are in here that we've made. Um, so it's thirteen voting members. And six non voting members. Okay. Um, so move to approve the uh Concord Middle School Building Committee charge um as uh in our amended in our packet with the additional amendments of at the end of section A purpose uh to add the sentence quote, throughout the process, the committee will engage with the select board, comma, the finance committee, comma, and superintendent to identify additional cost savings, end quote. And in section B to uh change the number of voting members from twelve to thirteen and the number of non voting members from seven to six to change bullet five superintendent school of schools to remove non voting as a designation from there. And on bullet ten to change the number of community residents at large from six to seven.
Second.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates. I.
Mr. Day.
I.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt, for doing all the legwork on that. That's, that's great. Uh, thank you for all the nineteen people serving on this important committee. It's great. Hey, I'm going to have a very brief update on our special legislation. As you recall, uh, our delegation was here a few months ago. Um. I will report very briefly, sorry, and Carrie's uh town manager reported that Article fifty about local one day licenses has now been signed by the governor. So we have six special legislation um articles up at the state house. This one has now gone through and what that will mean is when we have many um one day liquor licenses, we will be able to have uh less paperwork, less administrative burden, and it will be a little easier at our meetings. Uh, the next thing that we want to report on in special legislation is that Matt was able to testify on Article thirty one with the fossil fuel. Uh, Matt, do you want to talk about that briefly?
Um, yes, uh Senator Barrett had called this hearing and hosted it. And we had a number of legislators show up and make their statements at the beginning. And then um Concord was the first town called among the uh citizens to, to speak. And so I added my statement, which I've uh provided uh also as written testimony. And so you can see that. Um, and so, uh, and Amanda Cone uh made a companion statement uh that gave the, that provided a Carrie LaFleur's uh perspective on the issue. And I think that our, our statements worked well together. Uh, basically, I focused on uh the, the frustrations uh that we have had uh to implement our policy without uh any kind of, you know, way to enforce uh our goals. And uh Amanda also has uh talked about how uh we support both our own special legislation as well as uh the Tammy Guveas uh and, and Jamie um Raskin's uh companion bill that would allow towns to opt in to such a uh set of restrictions. So um, you know, we, we did make our voice heard and I did see some statements today uh from Senator Barrett on the issue. It, so we'll see if we can make some progress, but uh it, it is frustrating. And I think many people described their frustration that uh Governor Baker had promised, uh, you know, a net zero uh cut stretch code, and uh it's now seven months late in being issued. So uh e- even a draft. And it will have to be many revisions after that before it becomes law. So even if that was to be issued tomorrow, it would still be advantageous to us to be able to proceed ahead of that because it is just going to be a long time before that can become law.
Thank you very much, Matt, for putting in all the time it took to get, get that testimony um done. Thank you so much. And Linda, Linda, I think you are going to report on another uh housing legislation.
Yeah, I will. Thank you. Um, you know, as we, the select board has previously um reported um there Concord has two home rule petitions before the legislature, both for the transfer fee for affordable housing and the building permit uh surcharge uh for affordable housing. Um, and thanks to the consistent uh support over the last two years, both by the select board, by uh uh Richard Feeley, uh who's president of the Housing Foundation and Lisa Holdorf, who um is on the ad committee. Uh, we have provided um both written and live testimony over this two year period. Um, simultaneously, there has been a statewide coalition, which now has over seventy organizations that have signed on, who have been um particularly supporting the transfer fee, uh which has led to statewide enabling legislation, um that's before the legislature as well as our home rule petitions. Last week, something very significant happened, and that was, uh, and it's included in your packet, the press release. Uh, Mass General um Brigham's um joined the coalition and also support uh for the statewide enabling legislation and the, the home rule petitions for transfer fee to add to affordable housing. Uh, they linked both the health and the um health benefits as well as the employ- uh employment concerns and terms of affordable housing for their employees. And since they are extremely large, if not the largest uh employer in the state, um this carries significant weight. So we're anxious to see um what's going to happen and, and come uh out of that because that really was, was a big move last week. I will say that um locally, um our finance committee has um been holding us to the task of trying to find alternative sources of funding. And this has been a lengthy and involved process over the last two, two and a half years. And we have uh entered that process at numerous um engagement points and will continue to do so. Um, in that vein, I would say that um just last week, um, you know, last week, the Concord Housing, sorry, the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust submitted a letter again to the legislature, encouraging them to act on both the statewide enabling legislation and our local home rule for the transfer fee. And they also asked the select board to again, once again, submit a, a letter of support because this is a key juncture point uh yet again, uh before, particularly before February second. So I'd like to um uh propose that uh we authorize the chair to, to do that. And I would be happy to draft a letter for the chair um to, to submit uh yet another letter of support, uh because this seems to be a, a timely uh time to do so.
Thank you so much, Linda, um for continuing and being so dedicated. You've been working on this for several years now, multiple testimonies and letters, and we really appreciate it. And yes, I would really appreciate if you, if the board wants to send such letter. If you could draft it, I'd be happy to sign it. Um. I saw Henry's hand up.
Um, it's, I it is going to be an uphill battle. My legislative representative on Saturday sent an email which he says the Joint Committee on Revenue posted, notice it on Friday, January twenty eighth, the committee will conduct a virtual uh a virtual hearing uh on a variety of transfer tax bills. Other bills on the general subject were heard last year and carried over to the new year. The committee has made no recommendations yet. Uh, I do, this is my, the representative speaking, I do not expect any will get traction despite support from the new mayor of Boston. And as you may have read, Mass General Brigham Hospital, the latter position surely being a first for the hospital. So um the news from the state house is not optimistic, but uh, uh writing another letter is not going to hurt.
I.
Okay. I would just, uh, thank you for that, uh, Henry. I would just comment that um when Senator Barrett came before the select board a couple of weeks ago, he was not favorable about the um our home rule for um sustainability. But yet we went ahead and, and posted letters because, you know, it, this, it's, it's the momentum over time that makes the difference.
Oh, hey, it, it won't hurt, but you, we have to, we can't count on, we can't count that money in our housing budget at this point.
No, you're, you're absolutely right till we see it.
Correct. So, um. People agree we should send a letter. We want to take that vote. Okay, do I hear a motion?
Uh, move to appoint uh Linda Escobedo, a member of the select board to uh write a letter on behalf of the select board uh to um urge passage of our special legislation uh initiatives for um affordable housing funding.
Second.
Is that specific enough, Linda?
We just said, and, and, and the statewide enabling uh legislation for.
And the statewide en- enabling legislation, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay.
All right. Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates. Ms, Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you. Um. Linda, let me know. I'm, I'm around. I can sign it as soon as you want.
Thank you very much.
For drafting it.
And can I just, let me just mention that since uh he, he indicates that this is going to be on for a hearing on the twenty eighth, that it would probably be good to get that letter right out.
Yep. Yep, we might have to send it electronically and then follow up with a snail mail. Okay. Uh, Carrie, could you let Chris know that we might need his help um with some administrative part of this?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are moving on now to the nominations. Go ahead, Matt.
Sorry, I have too many Word documents open. Uh, okay. Um. Move to nominate the following people to the following committees for the following term dates. Stephen Stashetsky of seventy six Jenny Dugan Road and Heather Bout of thirty three Alden Road and interim town manager Carrie LaFleur, ex officio, to the Concord Middle School Building Committee until the end of the project. Francesca Cataldo of forty Hasmer Road to the Historical Commission is an associate member for a term to expire on January twenty third, twenty twenty three. Henry Moss of five fifty seven Sudbury Road is nominated by the Natural Resources Commission to the Historic Districts Commission as an associate member for a term to expire on January first, twenty twenty five. Abigail Flanagan of three ninety eight Main Street is nominated by the Concord Museum to the Historic Districts Commission from an associate member to a member for a term to expire on January first, twenty twenty seven. And Doug Bacon of four ten Lowell Road to the Housing, Concord Housing Development Corporation for a term to expire April thirtieth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, thank you to all those people. I see Francesca is present. Uh, thank you to all these people for serving the town. And we will move on to committee appointments.
Sure. Move that the terms of the following committee members of the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force be extended to June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. Mark Howell of six sixty eight in their snack hill road, Gail Hire of fifty four Nancy Road, David Hessel of thirty Concord Green, Steve Hopkins, Scott Hopkinson of sixty seven Indian Spring Road and Gordon Brockway of one twelve Hill Street.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
I.
Ms. Bates.
I.
Mr. Dane.
I.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you to the Fiber Broadband Completion Task Force to work on this. Great. Hey, we are moving to miscellaneous correspondence. We have in the packet a letter from the League of Women Voters about the upcoming debate this Thursday. We have a letter from the Concord Housing Fund and um Mass General Brigham, as we were just discussing. And we have two other letters that did not make it in time that we just received like this afternoon. They will be in next week's packet. And at this point, we're going to move on to public comment. First person will be Diane Proctor.
Thank you so much, Terry. Um, I am speaking for myself and not for the league at this moment. Um, but I, I wish to, to express my deepest thanks to the more than two hundred citizens who joined the consortium, uh, a consortium of organizations to organize the, the January sixth event on Monument Square. That consortium included Concord Indivisible, First Parish Church in Concord, the League of, of Women Voters of Concord and Carlisle, Karim Shalom, Concord Dems and other religious organizations in an effort to celebrate democracy. That was indeed the focus of the gathering, as I mentioned, at. That was indeed the focus of the gathering, as I mentioned at an earlier Select Board meeting. It proved a peaceful rally and on the very spot where our country's democracy was founded. However, as positive as our effort was, we caused understandable distress by the way we mounted the American flag. Our rods were incapable of supporting the flag that we brought, so we erroneously taped the rods to the Civil War monument and even used some tape on the flag itself. None of this was meant in any way as a disrespectful gesture to either the monument or the flag. We regret causing unhappiness by our effort and will be careful to make sure that nothing like that ever happens again. Ironically, it was with the deepest respect for all that flag represents, a united country devoted to the democratic process that we gathered. So thank you very much for hearing that commentary and the Select Board, and again, please accept our apologies. Thank you. Fifty-seven Sudbury Road. I forgot to say that.
Okay, thank you very much, Diane. It was a very successful event. And no, no harm was intended, so thank you, thank you for that remark. Carlin Reed.
Hi, Carlin Reed, eighty-three Witsend. This is a question for clarification, going back to the Concord Middle School Building Committee charge revision that you just approved. As I understand, you've you've now selected that thirteen voting members out of the total nineteen. Here's the question, it's about the quorum. What's going to be the quorum to make sure that you could hold the actual meeting? My understanding of how quorum works when you have voting and non-voting members is that when you have an odd number like thirteen, it's one more than half, which means you'll need seven voting members, not just seven members, but seven voting members present to actually hold the meeting or conduct any votes. Am I correct with that understanding from your perspective as well?
You're correct. I actually had reached out to our town clerk, who then talked with the Division of Open Government to confirm.
Great, thank you much. That's it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Bill Duckling.
Yes, I live at two fifty-four Fairhaven Road, and I made a point at last summer's town meeting of raising the question of the legal department budget, which every year since the Estorbrook Woods litigation began has come up way ahead of the budgeted number. And I think you came in this evening's meeting. I think that the the budget's been exceeded again. I think the original budget number was twenty thousand dollars, an estimate for the additional cost of the Estorbrook litigation, and it now turns out to have actually been eighty million dollars, a thousand dollars, beg your pardon. And I'm concerned that we seem to be on a train that's running and we can't get off. And I'm would have really appreciated if the Select Board thought about what's going on with this litigation that seems to have no end. One thing that concerns me terribly, I heard in an earlier comment, question about a conflict of interest. Seems to me that, from what I understand, the board has relied to a great extent on town council for advice about this litigation. And in fact, the town council is a member of Anderson and Krieger, who are the attorneys that are executing the litigation for the town. And it seems to me that's a huge conflict of interest. My conclusion is the only individual or organization that's benefiting from this whole litigation has been Anderson Krieger. I think to have the town spend now, it is approaching a million and a half dollars on this litigation is ridiculous. And I'd like to have the town board, Select Board, assure me that someone's looking at this and figuring out what the heck's going on.
Okay, thank you for that comment. I will just briefly say that the judge is expected to rule on this case in the next few months, and we are not expecting any expenditures between now and then. And we are watching it carefully. That is why we had Anderson and Krieger report tonight. And I thought I heard them say that they were under the targeted budget. Um, and Carrie, I don't know if you want to add anything else or whether that, go ahead.
So what what I will say and confirm is that we are under budget for the year. We have in total for legal services, a budget of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to date, including labor council expenses, which are about thirty thousand dollars. And and we didn't talk about those during the earlier presentation. But to date, we have spent a hundred and eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars for the year. So we are, that represents forty-four percent of the budget through December. So we are, we are tracking a little bit below budget. I I think there there was a specific question about maybe what what a specific budget for the Estorbrook litigation was. I I think there was a mention of eighty thousand dollars expended. I'm not sure that I've heard any specific budget for this this fiscal year for that suit. But we have, we have spent eighty-one thousand dollars in in this fiscal year, which is essentially after after the trial.
Yeah, I maybe didn't make my question clear. The twenty thousand dollar estimate came from the legal department's response to my question at last summer's town meeting, where they estimated that the additional expense for the trial would be twenty thousand, and it turned out to be eighty. That's my only point. They're always ahead of the budget.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will go to Denise Hearts. Denise, I think you're on mute.
Okay, Denise Hearts, one twenty-four Williams Road. I was going to say a lot of the same things Bill has already said. So I'll be really brief. I'm going to cut some of my remarks out. It's also about the budget in the Estorbrook Woods. I I'm really kind of frustrated about this whole thing because at the special town meeting in twenty eighteen, town council had said that it would be about five hundred thousand. We know that it's about one point six million now. And we did say at the last town meeting that Concord pays their bills, and yes, we do. And we've transferred money from the rainy day fund, and I think that's what we call it, and other fund, I think, funds not used from the library. And, you know, the lawyers always get paid, so whatever they spend or whatever they bill, they're going to get paid. So I'm really concerned about that, and it was also my interpretation from what Mr. Breckley had said, that the Mr. Macarius had said that it was going to be about twenty thousand dollars to finish out the lawsuit, but it's been eighty-one, which would be a four times what he had said. So that would be another estimation, just overrun, in my opinion. And basically, this is like the fourth or the fifth year that the lawyers have overrun and or miscalculated their estimates. And I just don't understand it as a taxpayer, how this happens. So my question is, where is the accountability for the overruns and missing the projected budgets? Because one point six million is a lot more than five hundred thousand. And personally, I feel the public has no idea how, who's going to win this lawsuit. And there could be an appeal, and how much is that going to cost us? Are we anticipating, are we going to budget for an appeal? Because that's just, it's just going to keep going on. So if the town wins, the landowners can appeal. If the landlords appeal, the town can, you know, there's just a lot of things that can happen and costs us a lot more money. So I'm really concerned about the future tax bills, how the impact it's going to have on our seniors. And also just, you know, especially with the new town, potentially the new middle school coming in at over a hundred million. So that's all I have to say, except for thank you for your service. I've actually enjoyed this meeting and learned quite a bit, so thank you for serving. I I do appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, the board has had quite a lot of discussion on these comments, and we may have more to say about that in the near future. Are there any other public comments? Okay, seeing none, I think we're ready for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Ms. Ackerman.
Hi.
Ms. Bates.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
And myself, Mr. Johnson, I.
Okay, thank you. Have a nice night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.